Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting to order. And before we proceed, I'm going to turn it over to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town's YouTube. I ask that those within the ring remain quiet unless they are involved in the discussion, and that those attending over Zoom keep their cameras off and microphones muted if they are not involved in the discussion. If you'd like to speak or on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. For those in person, please speak audibly toward any microphone or the microphone on the lectern. Before you make your comments, please state your name and the street that you live on for record keeping purposes. If this meeting gets interrupted, we will immediately end the Zoom and send a new LinkedIn email.
Okay, thank you. So before I turn it over to the board, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
No movement.
Okay, all right, motion. Second, is there discussion hearing on all this in favor? And I will now turn it over to the distinguished Chair of Board of Elections. Come up here. And conduct your. The floor is open for nominations for the three council seats that'll be up for election in May.
I'd like to make a nomination.
Yes.
I would like to nominate my dear Councilmember Shannon Rovac. Please write a pair.
Yes, looks a lot like Jeffrey.
I hope she'll accept the nomination because I think she does a great job on the council. I hope you'll support her.
Do you accept the nomination, Shannon?
Sure, thank you, Debbie.
Sure? Not yes?
Yay.
Yay. Yes, and I have two nominations to make. We'll test the yay factor. So I'd like to nominate Debbie Heller to be a councilmember for the next term. She's been a dedicated civil servant who really cares about this town, all the residents. She's been super engaged. I look forward to having her serve if she says yes.
Not only will I say yes, but thank you for that lovely introduction, and I would be honored to serve again if elected.
And you had another nomination?
Yes, and also I'd nominate Kavir Kumar to be a councilmember. Kavir has been really engaged with the community. He's reached out to different groups and people within the community through all his years of service on the council. And also really cares about the town, the community, the people, and I'd like to look forward to having him on the council too.
And you have that?
Gracious.
Thank you. Right? Are there any other nominations? What are you shaking today, face? If someone were nominating online with the town?
Yeah, but they're not.
In that case, I would like to close the nominations. Are there any objections?
No, me. I mean, it's your board, not us.
Okay, the nominations are closed, but I will mention that it is possible to, for the next two weeks, nominations may be done by petition. If someone wishes to do so, they need to have a petition signed by 20 registered voters and given that to the town manager. With that, I will bow out. Thank you. Thank you, sir. I do, I do want to say for the record that Jim is the new chair, and he's doing a fantastic job. You got elected last December, something like that.
In December.
December. And thank you so much. Our next item is our public comment period. If anyone wishes to ask a question or make a comment, if you're here in the audience, or if there's anybody. Not saying anything. Okay. The next item is the consideration of the consent agenda, and I felt. Oh, yeah, so. Could someone move the consent agenda and remove number C? Because I believe that should not be on consent.
I agree entirely with that, yes.
Okay.
So you're gonna?
So I move the consent agenda with the removal of item C to become an item on the agenda later in the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those in favor. Thank you so much. The next item is the building report. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to go over the building report. I'm also happy just to answer any questions if there are any questions about the building report.
Because you submitted it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we'll take it. Council President, Bar, do you have any questions?
Forty-eight, fourteen Essex. I gather the county permit has not been issued yet. Is there any reason why we're so delayed there? Do you know?
They haven't applied to the county yet.
Uh.
And I don't know.
Is there any chance you could follow up? I mean, it's the empty house problem. It's been empty now for months. So just ask them if they're going to apply sometime soon, really. That's what it comes down to.
Is that?
That's it, that's the only.
Uh, Councilmember Serco, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilor Heller.
No questions, thank you.
Councilor Kumar.
No question, just wanted to tell you from improving those that are planning statements. This is the first time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And Councilor Rovac, do you have any questions regarding the building report or any other?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we will now move to tree removal permits. The first one is public hearing, consideration of a recommendation by Town Arborist Dr. Tolbert Feather to remove the town tree located at forty-seven thirteen Trent Court. Dr. Feather, oh, he's here. Excellent. Here, do you think so?
So, uh, there's a cherry tree at forty-seven, forty-seven thirteen Trent Court. And if you'd like to remove it, replace this.
That's the report. Thank you. By the way, I want to thank our town clerk and the staff for improving our technology once again. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I have no question.
Councilperson Bar, do you have any questions?
No.
Councilor Serco, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Heller.
No question.
Councilor Kumar.
No questions.
Councilor Rovac.
Uh, no questions, thanks.
Okay, did any citizen? Okay, with that, is there a motion?
I move approval of the recommendation of the Town Arborist to remove the tree located at forty-seven thirteen Trent Court.
Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Heller. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor. Thank you. The next item, public hearing, consideration of the tree removal permit submitted by Carol Witten for the property located at fifty-four oh-three Greystone Street. Sir.
Um, this is the oak tree that's heavily leaning over the fence of two neighbors. And it's hazardous and I recommend removal.
Okay, thank you. Council President Bar, do you have any questions?
No, we didn't get a picture, though. I'm upset. All right. I'm sure it is hazardous.
Well, that could be submitted later for the record.
I can, I can submit.
That might be a good idea, just.
Okay.
Okay. You can do that.
All right, no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Serco.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller.
No questions, thank you.
Councilor Kumar.
No question.
Councilor Rovac.
No questions.
And Mr. Town Manager, did anyone indicate? Okay, council, you prepared to make a motion?
Move that we approve the tree removal permit submitted by Carl Witten for the property located at fifty-four oh-three Greystone Street for the leaning oak.
Is there a second?
Second.
I saw Serco first. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We are right on top. I know there were twenty minutes ahead, but we have our twenty minute rule. So I will, I will move to this public hearing, consideration of a permit application submitted by Kristen and Shannon Connor for the property located fifty-four twelve Uppingham for the construction of a screened porch. So we will begin now. Today is March third, twenty twenty-five. This is the hearing before the Town Council of the Town of Somerset for the building permit application submitted by John and Kristen Connor for the property located at fifty-four twelve Uppingham Street. The applicants are applying to, number one, construct a screen porch at the left rear of the existing house. Number two, relocate two HVAC units. The hearing will observe the following order. The Somerset Town staff will present their findings, submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. After that, the applicant will present the application or comment on the report. Next, the council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or the staff relevant to the application. Then, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, present comments to the council. Then, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. And after that, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision. An appointment shall not be issued before the expiration of thirty days to allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We now begin this hearing with a presentation of the town staff findings reports. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor previously said, Sean and Kristen Connor, property owners of fifty-four twelve Uppingham Street, filed a building permit application to the Town of Somerset, construct a screen porch below the existing house and relocate two HVAC units for the building code that the proposed green porch will be located twelve point seven five feet from the left side property line and twenty-eight point two five feet from the rear property line. Both setbacks exceed the minimum required in the town code. Screen porch will be approximately thirteen feet high, which meets the building height requirements. Maximum allowed block coverage is thirty-five percent, and the proposed block coverage is twenty-six percent. A note on this site plan discusses the contractor's vehicle parking requirements. And the tent toilet will be located adjacent to the driveway on the lot. MCVPS has issued their permits. And then for stormwater, Bailing Consultants, I'll read from the Bailing Letter, Bailing Consultants and Designers has completed our stormwater management review and find that the application will be complete and conform to the code once the following condition has been met. So basically, this, the letter mentions a variance. It's not a variance, but our code says that ESD practices have to be used first and then structural devices. So they use structural devices, and they submitted a letter as part of their application explaining why, which I'll explain in just a second. Uh, they find that the application conforms to the code because onsite infiltration would be provided for all runoff from all new impervious surfaces for a one-year storm event. The new impervious surface total four hundred and twenty square feet. A one-year storm event would generate thirty-one cubic feet of runoff based on the surface area. The plan includes the following stormwater treatment practices. Seven hundred and fifty square feet of landscape conservation area that practice will infiltrate sixty cubic feet of runoff during a one-year storm. Uh, with the application, the applicant submitted a letter explaining why they went within ESD practice. Primarily, it was the unique characteristics of the lot made other ESD practices impractical. And as well, there is an existing stormwater manage, maintenance, management system on the property. Um, plus the proposed conservation garden will cover a much, much larger area than the rain garden or infiltration system would. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tolbert to talk about the tree aspects of the report.
Um, there's no tree removals proposed, and I submitted a tree protecting plan to protect the public tree in front and two trees on the western side of the property. That includes my report.
Okay, thank you. And now I believe the applicant is online. Do you have any questions, Mr. Town Manager?
Um, maybe it's a question for Robin, but it, it does not appear to me that there's any structural device in the stormwater drainage plan that it is ESD, because our code does allow sheet flow to conservation area.
That's, that's correct. The conservation landscaping is an ESD practice. Just environmental site design means modifying aspects of the environment of your yard. In this case, in order to capture stormwater mitigation, that, of course, is exactly what conservation landscaping is. So it qualifies for environmental site design.
So did you?
So they're in, they're in tier one.
Yes, they are in tier one.
A preferred.
And there's no need really for any further review.
Yeah.
Okay, that concludes the second report. Okay, now, Ms. Con. Issue Chair.
I'm here.
Chair Connor, welcome. Can you, can you? Put your video on by any chance? Thank you.
Hello.
So now you have an opportunity to either present your application or comment on the report. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. We are hoping, as, as you've heard in the report, to add a small screened-in porch. Our architect and builder are in attendance this evening if there are any questions for them of a technical nature. And I want to thank everyone for their support and work to get to this point in the process. I don't have any other presentation.
The architect is here. Oh, hi. You can, can you come, just for the record, can you come forward in case anybody has questions?
Yes.
Since you're here, we might as well have you and state your name, and then if you could just stay there while people, if there are questions, thank you.
My name is Darby Hurdough, and I'm here.
Thank you so much. Council President Bar, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, no.
Councilmember Serco.
Well, actually, I have a question for Ron.
Yes.
So they're my neighbors. Am I allowed to participate, or is my life? Need to maintain?
Because it's a as-of-right permit, I think you can, because it just involves the application of objective criteria. There's no subjective analysis, but whatever you feel comfortable with.
I, I just want to say, um. The, I, I think it's, it's a great project and. I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Heller.
I do have a question about the HVAC units. Where's the HVAC now?
We're really just sort of slightly relocating it. Um, I can show you on the plans.
Yeah, I tried to look at them on, on here, and I couldn't see it. But I just wanted to, see, we're getting two instead of one now. I wanted to make sure that the neighbors are protected.
We, we have, there are two there now, and we're just kind of moving up the window slightly.
Okay.
But I may have to show you.
No, it's okay. I just thought it was going from one place to the other, and I, I have a hard time looking at these plans on, on the computer. The only other question I have is a silly little question about the temporary toilet.
Yeah.
And it's on the side of the driveway. Is it closest to the neighbors, or is it?
No.
Okay.
It's on the inside part, because there's currently a little area where the trash cans go, so between the driveway and the yard, so it's going to go there.
Okay, great. I don't know if we have any toilet, um, regulations where we put these things.
It has to be screened. We don't have regulations on where it can be placed, but we have regulations on it can't be visible from the straight.
Okay, all right, that's all. Thank you.
But that is a regulation, right?
Yeah.
It's a regulation.
Nothing better than a screened-in porch, so enjoy.
Okay, thank you. Councilor.
No questions.
Councilor Rovac.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, are there comments or questions from?
Yeah, I think.
Will you come forward and tell us your name and ask your question?
No, please.
Hi, my name is Paula Damian. I live on forty-seven hundred Forest Avenue. And I am behind the property, our property, your, their property, please. And I just wanted for the record for the town to know that when their house was built, whatever, ten, twenty years ago, we had a problem with down, with water coming out of the property, and I needed to build a.
I think you're, I think you're, you're, you're a different property.
I don't.
No.
This is on Uppingham?
It's an other.
Fifty-four hundred block.
If it's Steve's neighbor, how could it be?
You're diagonally behind the house.
Behind our house. It's the second house in Uppingham.
Yes.
It's the next house, the next house.
It's, it's.
No, you're, I think you're, you're want to comment on the next hearing.
No, it's this.
These are other one in Uppingham.
Yeah.
Put that on the screen.
On the other side.
There's another one on.
Can you do a screen?
How can it be your neighbor and her neighbor?
Yeah, it's not, the other street is Surry. Yeah, this is a different, this is a different. So hold your comment, thank you. So that, that, we need to strike that from the record, right, Mr. Town Manager?
Well, yes, Mr. Mayor, if it doesn't relate to this hearing.
It's not. She was mistaken on.
That was the next, that was the next.
It is, okay.
Which here.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because there's two on that street.
All right.
Yep. So thank you. Did anybody else want to? Oh, that was very good to call. Okay, thank you. So with that, I will turn it, I will, I will close the hearing and. Anyway, the, the hearings close, public hearing is over, and the record's closed. And now I'll turn it over to the council president to lead the deliberations and decision.
Right. I'll propose an motion, and then if anybody wants to bring in any comments, feel free. Um, so we are proposing approval of the permit application submitted by Kristen and Chan Connor for property fifty-four twelve Uppingham for the construction of a screened porch. Um, is there a second? Thank you. All right, so it's open. Anybody want to discuss any aspects of it?
Just a couple of comments. The screen porch addition, my understanding of the code is when, when porch is screened in, it becomes structure that contributes to the assessment of the calculation of footprint on the property. And even with that, as they note in their application, they're well within the thirty-five percent limit. So it's, it's a fully conforming approach, and they do a great job with conservation landscape on that property. They're nice neighbors. I support this.
Right. Um, okay.
Is there further discussion?
Shannon, are you wanting any comments?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I, I agree.
All right, so all those in favor? Aye, okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, so I want to make sure, I know you already wrote it, but, Mr. Town Manager, that was motion was legally taken sufficient. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. The next item is public hearing, consideration of a permit application submitted by Rachel Miller and John Adamovich for the property located at fifty-five twenty-nine Uppingham Street for the construction of a screened sunroom on the existing deck at the rear of the existing house.
You don't want to do the shifting the money fund because we're twenty-five minutes ahead of time at the moment.
So, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. President. I think we're going to, because our rules require that there, we not be more than twenty minutes ahead of our schedule, I'm going to move to the item, which is a consideration of the town manager to move one point two five million from the town's public fund MRS account with Truist Bank to be split evenly between the town's account with the Maryland local government investment pool and the town's account with the Montgomery County investment pool, as recommended by the town manager, the Finance Revenue Budget Committee. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So kind of explain what this is, is, uh, the Town of Somerset has two investment accounts for our savings. One overseen by the state government, one overseen by the county government. And we have a savings account with Truist, which is our, where we bank with. We currently have a savings account with Truist that we have quite a bit of money in, but it doesn't accrue much interest at all. Meanwhile, the two investment accounts both accrue quite a good amount of interest. And so after talking over with the FRBC, um, we kind of came to this proposal of moving most of that money out of our Truist savings account, which doesn't really have any, doesn't really have any return on investment to our investment accounts with both the state and the county. Councilmember Kumar's liaison, maybe he would like to comment on at all.
Yeah, I'll just say one very quick thing. We, EJ and the FRB, Peter Tynan, were to consolidate. We have had too many accounts, including a couple of empty accounts. So we've consolidated all of them and streamlined as part of finance operations. So this is an outgrowth of that. And I think it's a sensible next step.
All right.
It's, okay, hold on. And that concludes the report.
Yeah.
Okay, Council President.
Bar, do you have any questions? Is there any change in the risks of loss associated with the money when lifting funds?
No, it's a simple wire cons.
No, 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 I mean, in terms of the investments being risky at all.
No, this is overseen by the state and county and local governments, so they have to make sure that.
Is there your own question?
Um, all right, okay, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Serco, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilor Heller.
No question.
Councilor Kumar.
No question.
Councilor Rovac, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay. And Mr. Town Attorney, I don't think this requires, this isn't a public.
No, it's not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, council, you're ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I move approval for the town manager to move one point two five million from the town's public fund with Truist Bank to be split evenly between the Maryland local government investment pool and the Montgomery County investment pool, as recommended by the town manager and the Finance Revenue and Budget Committee.
Second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so we're still three minutes ahead, but I'm going to, the, the, yeah. And then, and then. No, okay, so I'm going to go ahead with it, Mr. President. The next item is public hearing, consideration of a permit application submitted by Rachel Miller and John Adamovich for the property located at fifty-five twenty-nine Uppingham Street for the construction of a screened sunroom on the existing deck at the rear of the existing house. So we will begin. Today is March third, twenty twenty-five. This is a hearing before the Town Council of the Town of Somerset for the building permit application submitted by Rachel Miller and John Adamovich for the property located at fifty-five twenty-nine Uppingham Street. The applicants are applying for, number one, to construct a screened sunroom on the existing deck at the rear of the existing house. The proposed plans necessitate a variance, and so the applicant has filed a variance request before the Somerset Town Council per Somerset Code Section one one-two dash fourteen F. Specifically, the applicant is requesting a variance from Somerset Code Section one one-two dash fourteen E five C, which reads, impertinent part, "All construction creating an increase in impervious surface coverage of one hundred and fifty square feet or more in area must include a stormwater drainage plan." The applicants have submitted a stormwater management plan, but it does not contain enough detail for the town's stormwater engineer to complete their contracted tasks. The variance is to exempt the application from requiring the detailed stormwater management plan that is required for a letter of recommendation from the town's stormwater engineer. And Mr. Town Attorney, do you want to add anything to this?
So I would just add what I emailed to the. We can't have any deliberations of the record.
It won't pick up if you talk today, Mr. Town Attorney.
Just what I, I sent by email today. So it's, it's not a variance of the construction per se, because the proposed screen porch would comply with height limitations and setbacks, but the, the variance is from the requirement to submit a engineered water drainage plan. There is a plan in the record that you'll see from the applicant's landscape architect. So a rain garden is proposed, and the architect, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the landscape designer. the architect, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the landscape designer has provided calculations and made an argument that the proposed one hundred square foot rain garden would capture the runoff for all roof surfaces. But I, I might suggest that additional explanation of how the calculation was performed be provided and unless President Barr understands that.
No, it isn't. It's not. It would be everybody.
Well, I mean, but he could explain it to all of us, is what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor.
Has the applicant been informed of all this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. The hearing will observe the following order. The Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present the application or comment on the report. After that, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. After that, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Next, if necessary, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record close. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision and the permit shall not be issued before the expiration of thirty days to, to allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. We now will begin the hearing with the presentation of the town staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as the mayor previously stated, uh, the, these property owners and applicants are looking to construct a screened sunroom on the existing deck at the rear of the existing house. The, the, uh, proposed screen sunroom is fifty, is three hundred and twenty-five point eight square feet. The proposed total building footprint will be two thousand five hundred eighteen point seven square se- square feet or thirty-four point nine percent of the lot. So it is just under the thirty-five percent lot coverage requirement. The proposed sun, screen sunroom will be located sixteen feet from the right side property line and twenty-one point five feet from the rear property line, meeting setback requirements, and construction vehicles will be just parked on the driveway. MCDPS has issued their permits. Uh, as the attorney of the mayor mentioned, there is a very, a small variance attached to this application. They do have a stormwater plan, but it was designed by a landscape company rather than an engineering company, which we require according to the town code. Uh, so they do have a stormwater plan. They are looking to construct a rain garden. And then I'll pass it over to the arborist to comment on the trees.
Uh, no trees to be removed. There's a one public tree to be protected in the front and two private trees next to the driveway. And that concludes my report. And that concludes the panel.
Okay, thank you. And I, I believe that's the. Ms. Miller, welcome.
Thank you, everybody.
And now, do you wish to, uh, present anything or comment on the report, staff report, or add anything, or whatever you'd like to say? Thank you.
Um, just for the record, the reason we're trying to do this is because the porch itself is coming up, so we're gonna have to replace the flooring anyway. Um, so we wanted to put the, make it a screened-in porch just for more comfort. Um, but it's gonna have to get, the work is gonna have to get done one way or another. So we would love to be able to screen it in and would appreciate the approval.
Thank you so much. Council, President Bar, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I do. Um, the deck, you, you're, you're basically screening in the deck in, in essence. That's the area that you're using. Uh, is the current deck permeable? Is it, does, in other words, does it capture water by draining through it, or does water run off it?
It's the, it's just a, um, that, the fake wood.
Okay, um, why it matters is if it's, if the water is currently running off the deck, then you're not really adding to the impermeable surface by putting a, a roof over it. But if the water is be captured by the deck, running through the deck, then you are adding it. So that's, that's an important difference. Do you happen to know whether water runs through that, that deck? Or not?
It's not, I mean, it do- it doesn't capture anything. It's not, but it doesn't, it also, so it, water doesn't, it does, it rolls off of it. Um, but there is some porosity because it does have some holes and, you know, it does have some, um.
All right.
Bit of gap in it. So it's not completely.
All right. Yeah. So I mean, okay, thank you. So I mean, whatever it is, you're not really adding, um, four hundred and twenty-five additional impermeable surface. It's some fraction of that.
Yeah.
Because only some of the water's being captured. Okay. Next question is, um, for the rain garden, did, uh, American landscape, uh, did they, did they do a soil filtration test? Did they check to make sure that the soil uh, is permeable enough to capture the water that you expect to capture?
They did not. They have not come over to, to test the water yet, to test the land yet, the property yet.
Because, I mean, i- i- if they haven't done that, we, we, it, a rain garden may not work there, is the point. If the soil isn't sufficiently permeable, that's, that's the issue.
If it doesn't work, we could always do, we, you know, we, we can always do a dry well, um, or we can do another. I mean, I know you guys would have to approve a dry well, but we would always do some, we can always do something else there to catch the, to catch the water.
All right.
Do stormwater mitigation.
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 the neatest fix would be if the, if the soil is permeable, then you can do the rain garden. And and also, the rain garden will capture at least four hundred and fifty square feet if the soil is permeable.
It's not four hundred and fifty square feet anyway. It's, it's three hundred and twenty-five square feet minus a hundred and fifty, right? So it's, it's really two seventy. It's, it's.
All right, all right. Anyways, cap- gonna capture more than you need, assuming it's permeable is the point. Um, and so I've got no concerns over that. It, it, it is the issue of whether it is permeable, sufficiently permeable. All right, I'll, I'll stop my questions there and I'll kind of ask.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cirque, do you have any questions?
Um, I do not have any further questions, Robin. After that, thank you.
Counselor Haller.
I don't understand one thing. Do we have a plan? Is, is there a plan?
Yes, there is a, there is a plan.
From American Plan Food?
It's from a landscaping company, probably an engineering, engineering firm.
And do we not require it to be from an engineering firm?
We do require.
Yeah, but that's, actually, that's not in the code, though, is it?
It, we require, um, precise calculations, which really can only be done by an engineering.
Okay. So are we going to, before we approve this permit, are we going to get that plan?
No, it's, that's the, it's a variance from the engineering plan, uh, so that they can just use the landscaping plan.
And that's okay?
It's up to you. It's up to you.
Yeah, I mean, it, what I was trying to say, well, all right.
No, I guess my question is, do we have one standard, or do we have several standards of how we do these things? Now, um, I'm okay, you know, you say this is okay, but, you know, um, if other people have to get a, an engineering company, why don't they? Or why can't everybody just do one or the other? You know, what's our standard?
Maybe the town attorney should answer that.
Sure. So there is one standard, and that is to have an engineered plan submitted that confirms that the runoff from all roof surfaces for a one-year storm event would be captured. And the town's consultant was unable to provide a review of this case because an engineered plan was not provided. So the applicant is requesting that the requirement for an engineer, engineered plan be waived and that the town accept instead the plan submitted by the landscape designer.
And that you can debate when you're making your decision.
And, and the reason that we're asking for it and appreciate the, the question here for, and for fairness and for all that, is because we're talking about a hundred and seventy-five square feet of runoff, not, uh, not significant. I mean, I understand any sign, any, anything is significant, but not a huge amount of, not a huge amount of, uh, coverage here.
Okay.
Definitely.
I'm done.
Counselor Kumar.
Uh, Bayland did submit a report.
They did not.
They did not submit any report.
No, because, uh, they basically couldn't, um,
understood. And then on page, there's no page number on it. But there's the calculations for stormwater management. That's the calculations that I've submitted, yeah, by the landscaping, by American Plan.
Yeah.
And Rachel, American Plan is the American Plan on River Road?
Right.
Okay. The, the well-known landscaping company, right? It's like the two locations are, okay.
Yeah, and if you go online to do stormwater management, it's just a calculation. It's just a division.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Is it? Counselor Ravak, do you have any questions?
Um, I don't know if this is for the applicant or for maybe the attorney, but so do you not have to get a Montgomery County, um, sediment plan for this construction project?
That's not required because that's only required if you disturb more than five thousand square feet.
Oh, okay. Okay. So this doesn't have to go permitted through Montgomery County?
Well, they have their county per- building permit.
But Montgomery, yeah, sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say Montgomery County doesn't require a permit for that, for that level of, for, for that small of a, um, stormwater permit.
Okay, and then, um, and then so, so I guess I kind of missed it. So the existing deck that's there, it, this is gonna be a hundred and seventy square feet bigger than the existing deck? How are we, I don't underst- so is it, you're just basically covering the existing deck?
Right.
And, um, and it's with a screen, a screen?
It's a screen, but it, because it has a cover, because it would, in order to put the screen up, you would need to put a roof. And because you're putting the roof, you would have, you would have stormwater runoff because you would have there, when you, once you have the roof, you, you, you get runoff from the roof. That's what they're counting.
But then, but then what it was, so I guess a deck is considered permeable?
That I don't know. Now you've, now you've exhausted my knowledge.
Um, okay. Um, so basically, we're, we're treating.
Second, Counselor Ravak, maybe, uh, the town attorney or the staff can answer that.
Is a deck considered permeable?
Sure. So it's, it's similar to the questions President Barr was asking. If a deck has space between the boards, then it's allowing rainwater to go to the ground. If the boards are closely located, then it might be impervious. I think that the testimony here is that some water is getting through. And so the town requirement is triggered because it's a change from a situation where water is going through the deck to a situation where there will be, you know, a roof. And so there will be new impervious surface area requiring a drainage plan.
Okay, but then how were you guys, um, what was the calculation with a hundred and seventy square feet?
It's three hundred and twenty-four square feet is the existing deck, and it's what you have to cover is minus a hundred and fifty.
Okay. Okay. All right. I have no other questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and now, uh, we'll go the, this is Daniel Stewart.
Can I ask one more question, please?
Yeah, yeah. Hold on one second. Go ahead, ask your question.
One more question, Rachel. When you, when you go to build the, the, um, deck, you're gonna pick up your old flooring and get new flooring, correct?
Yep.
And you pour it, you pour in any con- concrete for any of this?
No.
They're, they're not gonna put any concrete for anything? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Please introduce yourself again, because it's a different. Thank you.
Hi, I'm, I'm Bala Danis. I live on four seven hundred Froston Avenue.
I'll give you the microphone.
Hi. Uh, I'm here only because of, like, I want to issue about it, the, the town. And it seems like you are aware about the, the water issue because I am below. You know, and when they build the, this building like ten, twenty years ago, I had a lot of runway in autumn and I ended up taking a storm kind of taking it to the, it's like flower days in the front of my house. So I just wanted to, for all you to be aware, that if something that, that broke, you know.
So maybe we could have the, uh, Revada famism, can you address that, please, Ms. Miller?
I talked with Mrs. Miller and she was very.
Well, let's let her, let's let her put that on the record. Do you want, can you respond? It's rebuttal to.
I, I'm sorry. It was really, I couldn't understand exactly what she said. Could you, somebody?
Okay, can you, can you restate it? And get, Varda, use the, use the. Get close to the mic.
I, I just am here for the town to know my concern about if it doesn't work, the water plan, you know. Just want, want you to be aware about. So that's all. So I spoke with Mrs. Miller. She explained to me she, she will do the best she can. But I wanted for the record to know, for the town to know that this may be an issue because I've experienced it while they constructed this building a few years ago.
Thank you for coming. Ms. Miller, do you want to, um, address that for the record?
Yeah, we, sure. Um, we spoke, I guess, over the last weekend, um, and we, she came over, we looked at the property, um, and it's, you know, we'll do the best we can and to avoid any kind of runoff and um, I don't think there'll be a problem, but if there is, we'll obviously work to address it.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, now.
Comment.
Okay, come. Remember to say your name and talk into the.
Raphael Daniels at forty-seven hundred Ballstone, husband of Martha Daniels. But against the property, you know, lower. Florida indicated when the construction was going on, obvious quantities of water ran off the corner of the house in Dorn. Their neighbor, and then it flowed onto our, flooded the back. So we erected a wall and a trench to defer that flow to our garden, and that's worked beautifully. After the several thousand dollars been spent. However, my concern is you have to address the permeability. You say you're going to, but they have to demonstrate that so that the runoff from the roof will be appropriately absorbed.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, do you want to, um, did you hear that?
Yeah, I was able to hear that. Yeah, I mean.
You want to respond?
Sure. I mean, we're, we're gonna put in a rain garden or, and/or a dry well, so, and the rain garden is a dry well. So, I mean, we're gonna address it.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed. The council may now discuss and deliberate on the findings of fact and conclusions of law and may make a decision. And I'll turn it over to the council president to lead the discussion.
All right, uh, there's two pieces really here. One is whether we allow the variance from our normal uh, engineering report for this because it is a small-scale project. That's the first thing. And the second thing is whether we approve the small-scale project if we allow the variance, first of all. So that, that's, that's what it is. Um, we have in the past approved variances for, at least one variance for a small-scale project, and we've also said that we should probably alter our code to, um, make the requirements easier for small-scale projects. So I, i- i- in that sense, I'm happy to provide a motion where we, uh, allow that variance. Um, but that does not mean that we approve the project as it currently stands. So, um, with that understanding, I'm move the motion to approve the variance to allow this project to go through without an engineering plan. Is there a second?
Okay.
All right.
Okay, discussion. Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
It is, Mr. Mayor. It, it may need to be revisited based on how the council rules on the second question.
Yes, right.
So, so is there discussion of this motion?
Well, I guess I have a question or discussion.
Oh, yeah, you go ahead. I, I, yes, go ahead.
Um, so don't we have, like, Bayland, um, doing, like, wouldn't Bayland be looking at this project and making a recommendation based on, on what they see?
Uh, the variance is to exempt the project from the Bayland review because it's a small-scale project. Uh, we have done that before, actually.
But, um, so, like, what's the difference, like, of having Bayland, um, review it or not?
Uh, the difference is financial for the applicants. It costs a considerable amount of money to hire an engineer to, uh, review the plans and modify them if necessary.
But does, does Bayland then just only require an engineering plan in order to look at it, like? I mean.
The, 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 the calculations required in terms of the capturing the water by the, uh, devices you're using, uh, require an engineer to look at them, yes.
But I think Shannon is, uh, raising an underlying issue here. It's not related to the application, which is that I think Bayland should be able to look at this, like the calculation on the page, and give us an opinion. It doesn't have to be from a standard engineering report. I, I, given the calculations are straightforward math. So, and it would be nice to have an expert look at that math and just say, hey.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, and I, that's something in our working session we need to address. I think PJ, you're planning to do that. I think we need to address sort of why can't Bayland do that and help us understand what that is. But that's a separate underlying issue here.
Right.
Uh, which I appreciate the way you said.
But I, I, I think what, what we're really saying is that we need to bring that up in a work session and to clarify our code and see what Bayland can do without an engineer's report to Bayland. But for this project right now, the idea is to approve the variance. Do it without the Bayland report so that, and then we can get on to discuss the, the, the actual, uh, permit application itself.
So is there further discussion?
I feel like, I feel like Bayland should be looking at this, like, regardless. So I don't know if that means, like, we should approve the variance or not, but I just think that they should, you know, especially with, um, you know, some history of runoff. Like, I just would like their, you know, our, our town to have a consultant just look at the plans very briefly. I don't think they have to be an engineer plan, but, you know, to look at what American Plant says and what is kind of being offered, is my view.
All right.
I understand they cannot, because it's not an engineer report. That's what I, we heard in the Q and A. And that, I think we have to ask Bayland when they visit us. So it's, it's more sort of what they are willing to do. And it's a gap we have with them. That's what I understood. So they, they, we, we will say, hey, have a look at this, and they'll tell us we cannot, because it's not an engineering report. But that'll be the back and forth with them. And I think we need to understand from that, under what conditions can they review and, you know, so on and so forth. And maybe we need a different form or a different way to address it. Anyway, they are very expensive, by the way. So.
Repeat, Lindas?
Uh, Bayland.
Is it expensive, you're saying?
Yeah, my impression from the numbers EJ shared with us at a previous hearing sounds expensive for a two paragraph report. You know, which is based on math that you can find online, frankly, at times. So I, like I was saying, I think that's a separate issue we have to solve for. Given the small size, I'm kind of with you, Robin, that this doesn't seem like a big deal to me.
Okay, is there further discussion? Why don't we clarify what the motion is? So, because maybe.
Okay, it's to approve the variance. It's to approve the variance request to allow the proposal to be considered without the report from Bayland.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion?
I, I have a little, I just, I just hope this doesn't open us up to, well, you let them do it, why can't I do it? I think we need to have clear, you know, projects of this size and this size or whatever, you know, can, can do, you know, what, what they're asking us for. I just don't want to be left open to, um, to not doing the right thing in the future. You know, if, if we need to have a project of this size evaluated with an engineering firm, then so be it. But if we don't, we don't. I don't want to give anybody any undue, you know, um, expense. That's not our idea, but I'm just worried about this.
I've already done it once before in a different, because it was, you know, they came, said we want a variance because we kind of bored the report because the report would be more expensive than the project itself. So I think for smaller projects, we need a different.
Then you're right. We need to go to a work session and we need to iron it out and we need to have clear standards.
It's unduly penalizing small projects.
But what I'm trying to say is I think this project would fit whatever our new standard is going to be because it is small.
I'm fine with that.
Right.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion?
So all those.
Hearing none, all of us in favor.
All those against or you're?
Are you, are you voting against Shannon?
Yeah, I, I'll vote against, but.
All right.
Okay, so was that, was that, did you vote again?
I vote for.
It's four one.
Okay, so thank you. So now, do you have another motion?
Yeah, uh, so the motion now is to, uh, consider the permit application, uh, for the property located at fifty-five twenty-nine Alphacam Street to add a screen sunroom on the existing deck. Uh, is, is it just to consider the motion? Is there a second? All right. I, I, I'll bring up my comment first, which is that, that at the moment, the rain garden lacks a perme- soil lacks a permeability test. It's a very simple test to do, um, and American Landscape are capable of doing it. Um, without that permeability test, uh, we don't know whether the rain garden will work. We won't, don't know whether it will capture the water that's intended for it to be captured. So I cannot pass this, I cannot vote for this motion without putting a condition on that it must pass the permeability test.
Well, why don't you make the, why don't you amend your motion with contingency?
All right, amend the motion without contingency then, which is.
But I, I think that has to be, wasn't it seconded?
I, I, yes.
Okay, so I think you have to do an amendment now.
Okay, well, we'll.
So what's your amendment?
All right, well, I, okay, I'll propose an amendment.
And Ron can help you.
Build the contingency into the motion that the so- the soil in the rain garden, or proposed rain garden, must pass a permeability test. Um, that the rainscapes, uh, uh.
Well, that's it.
Folks.
That maybe Ron, can you, can you, can you, can you help him?
Ask for Mr. Or go to the next.
Hold on a second. Let's let, let's let, um, the town attorney.
So the, the motion, the motion would be to, to grant the permit application with the condition that a permeability test be performed by American Plant and that it passes that test. But the question would be, what does it mean to pass? Because infiltration rates.
Right, it follows the rainscapes guidelines for rain gardens.
Which are what?
Uh, I can't remember them offhand, which is what.
I remember it's like, you dig a hole.
Yeah, I mean, I know what the test is, I just can't remember.
It's a, it's a, it's a drawdown percentage.
You can fashion this so that you don't have to get specifics.
It, it just follows the rainscapes guidelines, which are actually on their site and available.
And then the second question would be, so our code requires whenever a water drainage plan is approved, that an applicant sign a maintenance agreement that's recorded in land records that requires maintenance over perpetuity. Would that be required in this case?
Well, I mean, the code requires it. We don't need it in the motion, though, right?
Okay, so for that to be done, we do need a plan to be, you know, referenced in that agreement. And so I would have follow-up questions. Is the only part of the plan that this rain garden be installed? Yeah, as located, are the rain barrels part of the plan is overflow from the rain barrels to be conveyed to the rain garden? Uh, that, I can't, I can't tell that.
Right, so what do you want to put in your motion?
Um, okay, that, that, what we, I mean, we need, um, I did have questions along these lines, but I was trusting American Plant to be able to do this. In order for the rain garden to work, the, um, runners from the porch have to go directly to the rain garden to feed it. And if you are using rain barrels too, then again, you want runoff from the rain barrels to go directly to the rain garden. Um, so if we put that into our motion, that really is what I expect American Plant is going to do anyway. But I'm saying we're gonna put it in our motion to make sure it happens. That's all.
Okay, so Ron, I think the town attorney can. Come on.
And someone will need to repeat the motion.
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna.
Yeah, so motion to approve the permit with the condition that a permeability test be performed and the infiltration rate.
As per rainscapes infiltration.
Hold, hold on, this is between.
Okay.
This is the president's motion. So can you continue to state the motion to see if this is what is the intent of the president?
Yes. Motion would be to approve the permit with the condition that a permeability test be performed in the area of the proposed rain garden and that the results of that test conform to the requirements of the Montgomery County Rainscapes Program, that the rain barrels have an overflow connection that would be piped directly to the rain garden. And I, I, I didn't know what you meant by runners, Mr. President.
Oh, it, it, it's the drain pipes should feed into the rain garden directly.
From the roof surfaces.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so does that capture everything you want?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there discussion on this amendment to the motion? To the main motion?
Any discussion? All right. Okay, further discussion of this, I mean.
The main motion or the? No, no, this is on the amendment to the motion.
So do we accept the amendment to the motion?
Yes, I accept the amendment. Okay, is there further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all of us in favor.
All right.
Okay, so that passed unanimously. Now, the, why don't you state, Mr. Town Attorney, what the original motion was as amended? Or do you want?
I was, I was typing.
Let the attorney do it.
What I just said.
It is just what the attorney.
But it was to approve as with the amendment. It's approve them.
The motion that I previously read out?
No, 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 no. So it's, what it is, is to approve the application as amended by the.
Yes.
Yes. So is there further discussion on the motion to approve the application as amended?
Yeah.
Okay, what you want to say?
Couple of things. First of all, uh, Bayland could not review this, this in its current form, partly because their perme- permeability test has not been submitted. Um, I think if they had submitted the permeability test, Bayland might have been able to review it. The other point I want to make here, and it's, it's for you, is that if the rain garden is doing its job and the rain barrels are doing their job, they're gonna capture considerably more water from the, uh, yard here than is currently being captured, uh, which is gonna help your, your, your property. Um, that's all.
Okay, is there further discussion of the motion as a matter of fact?
Yes. So this is perhaps more of an observation, but we're in the discussion period. I'm
but this is whether you're for, this is.
We have voted with the motion.
You're, so this is either you're arguing for it or against it.
Comment.
Just go ahead, yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I'm surprised that this was presented to us this evening without the soil permeability test being complete because we really don't have. W- w- we're trying to work with it and we're trying to come up with sort of conditions on an approval, but it's, it sort of feels like it's an incomplete package to me. I just think that that is an inherent part, will be required for any soil conservation project. That's, that's just an observation. I, which gets back to what you were saying, Ron, it's it's essential to assessing whether or not this proposal works, is to know what the soil conditions are.
So you agree with the conditionality before?
Yes, so, so I agree with the conditionality, um, and, and I think that wh- if this, if the rain garden is not effective, would not be effective because of the soil conditions, a engineered solution with a dry well would be effective.
Well.
It's just less desirable.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna comment on that, too.
Um.
The dry wells also have to, um, have permeable soil. So it's much the same issue with dry wells as it is with rain gardens on that regard. There are other ways, rain barrels do not need perme- permeable soil, but you've got somewhere to put the water that comes out of the rain barrels. Um, so a dry well isn't necessarily going to answer it, is, is the point. You might be able to put a dry well elsewhere in the yard that would be more permeable. Um, anyway, um, any other comments on the motion? Because we've got to vote on the motion.
I mean, the only thing I would add is I heard from the applicant that they're desired to do the next best thing if that doesn't work out. So they said that they would do it. I heard from, uh, you, Rob, and I tend to, uh, confer as per previous applications that these interventions are net positive.
Yeah.
And what was the status quo? If you don't have these interventions, you do have more runoff, more challenges, which, you know, should have happened previously, frankly. So all of that in mind, I think this is a step in the right direction for this part of.
Yeah, it is going to improve things beyond their current state, is what it was going to.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor.
Of the amended motion. All right, all right.
All of us in place. You, you got a four, Counselor Ravak?
It was four.
Okay, thank you.
And Debbie?
Thank you.
Did you?
You were four.
I was four.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was four.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.